Okay, I'm, we'll call to order. Call to order the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for October 15th, 2018, and first ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I'd like to ask Reverend Patrick Womack to come forward, our chaplain, and give us our invocation.
Thank you. Let us pray. Our gracious God and Heavenly Father, we praise you, for you are the one from whom all blessings flow. We're grateful to you for the opportunity to serve in leadership and to be blessed as citizens of this county. Please guide these, our leaders, as they make decisions on behalf of all of us, that your wisdom may prevail in their hearts and in their minds. The conversations that happen in this room, whether they are speaking or citizens, Lord, may we all speak with civility, with peace in our hearts, and determined to accomplish the greater good. And, Lord, please have mercy on those other counties in our nation that are suffering in the wake of storms and tragedies, whether in Florida or the eastern part of our own state and other regions. Blessed that they may recover and be in a better position of strength than they were even before the storms, we pray that you will provide for all of those who serve in vital ways on behalf of us all. And all of these things we pray in your matchless name. Amen.
Amen. All right, I'd like to welcome everybody this evening. Can you hear me okay? This, it sounds like I'm, I usually don't have to get this close to this microphone. I don't know. If you can, have somebody check on that, because usually it comes through pretty clear, and it's not. I mean, I'm having to eat it. Okay, next, we'll move to public comment session. I don't have anyone that's signed up for public comment. Would any like, anyone like to come forward for public comment this evening? All right, if not, we'll move to constituent concerns. Mike?
Uh, nothing right now. Kirk, I think Brandon and I got a request from Evergreen to help them rent the facility at the fairgrounds this year for the Santa Pal, to give Santa Pal to the kids, to our young people in the schools. And it would be around $1,600.
Did we do that last year?
Yeah, we did that last year. And it helps our school kids. And the more, it helps the fairgrounds and it helps the school kids, because they can, every dollar that they put in, it can go towards.
Okay. Is that something we need to do this evening, or can we do it next time?
No, just, next time.
Okay.
I just, is that okay?
That's fine with me. Is that all?
Yeah.
Let me echo what the Reverend Womack said. I went down east and to visit my wife's home near Atlantic Beach. There's a lot of people suffering out there in our state, in Austin, Florida, and other regions. So, please keep those people in your prayers. They have, a lot of them have lost everything. The only thing they have is what they are wearing. So, anything that you can do as far as the public would be greatly appreciated.
Okay.
Matter of fact, some of the schools have, have been out about three weeks, I believe, and still can't get back in, so.
All right. Thank you, Bill. Brandon?
I had some things that come up on Friday, and I'll be getting with Mr. Morehead on those, so that's it.
All right. All right, we'll move to administrat, and I think he is trying to work on that. I don't know if anybody wants to move forward, you can, because I know it's not easy to hear tonight.
Much of Baptist.
Nick, we don't have any administrative agency reports this evening. Does anyone have any adjustment to the agenda? All right, if not, we'll just keep moving through. We'll go to the consent agenda. First item of consent agenda is request approval of October 1st, 2018, regular meeting minutes. Does anyone have any changes or corrections to those meeting minutes? All right, if not, then we'll move to request approval of, oh, here we go.
Oh, it's back on.
Yeah. Request approval of September 2018 refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries. Greg West, our Assistant Tax Assessor. Greg?
Good evening, Commissioners. Mister Chairman, I'm here to request the approval of the September 2018 releases, refunds, amendments, and discoveries. I'd be glad to answer any questions. If you notice, we have a little bit of a different report this month. We finally got on our BiTech system in our personal property, so a report looks a little bit different, but same information.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? Greg?
I was just wondering, Greg, I noticed that we have four years on the land use, and I have had questions when someone sells a piece and it comes out of land use, the county can go back three years to recoup the past due taxes, and then there's, it looks like it's four years, but.
Isn't it the current year plus?
That's correct. What we do, we go back three years plus the current.
Right.
So, that gives you four years. And that, that happens a lot of times when something's been in the land use program, and they sell the property to another owner. They may wish not to continue to be in the program, or they may not qualify, so then that requires us to do a rollback bill of three years plus the current. Now, we also have what's called our discovery bills, which would be, for example, if we discovered someone's property that had not been listed at all, for whatever reason that may be, and we can go back five years plus current on those particular items, so.
And people, and it's just on what's deferred?
That's correct.
So, that's why, a lot of folks will, you know, I'm dealing with land splits, and so they'll ask me about that, and I'm like, well, it's only what's deferred, and you can look on your, on, well, on GIS, it says in red, it has what's deferred, and that's what they'll pay taxes on. And a lot of times, it's not as much as they think it's going to be, so.
That's correct.
So, it's just what's deferred, not, not the whole thing again.
Yeah, it's a great program. We encourage everybody to take advantage of that if they can. It helps our farmers keep the land in their family for years to come, hopefully, and it's a great program all across the state.
Just to add to that, that land use stuff, that's a Department of Revenue regulations and all. County has to follow those rules. We don't set those rules.
That is correct. That's state mandated.
Yeah, but we set, we set our rate, though, don't we? I mean.
We can choose, I think, sometimes between three.
Yeah, they give us three rates, I mean, you know, but it's still all, I'm talking about, you know, how, how, what determines whether it can be in land use. That's what I'm talking about.
Correct.
I know we have one of the lowest deferred rates in the state of North Carolina.
They usually give us three, and we can choose.
That's correct.
Out of the three levels.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Next, we have request approval of September 2018 tax collections update. Mike Matthews, a tax collector. Mike?
Good evening, Commissioners. Our current collection rate net, right now, as of September 30th, is 4.51%. As Greg was just saying before, we find the reason that's a little bit lower than it was this time last year, or a lot lower than it was this time last year, is with the new software program, BiTech, not having it ready to go as far as billing. Bills didn't go out till September 19th, whereas usually they go out at the beginning of September. So, we'll have that number called up by the end of this month. That's safer next month's meeting.
All right.
And then our delinquents were at $1,604,417.01.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions?
I noticed that on the delinquents, it's at 508,000, right, for this year so far?
Uh, yes.
The total? And last year, it was only, it was 351. No, this year, it's 351, and last year, it was 508. So, we're $157,000 less.
Our delinquency is going down every year. I mean, every year that we go through, our delinquent number is dropping more and more, because our current collections are up. Therefore, there's not as much delinquents as there are, has been in the past to collect.
Okay.
We're basically collecting out a smaller pot.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions? All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Next, we move to request approval of budget amendment. Julie Davis, General Fund, Public Safety, Sheriff's Office, 11,553. Could you tell us about that, Julie?
Yes, good evening. This is a grant the Sheriff's Office has received for the $11,553, and it is going to go to purchase some equipment for the search and rescue within the Sheriff's Office. This is separate from our emergency management type grants that we've received in the past. And our sheriff is here. He'd be glad to talk to you about it, if you'd like to hear from him, as far as what type of equipment.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of Julie, or would you like the sheriff to expand any on that? Okay. No? All right, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed? And that passes unanimously. All right, next, we have an approval of a resolution declaring the opioid crisis a public nuisance to accompany the authority to represent agreement with McHugh Fuller Law Group. So, all five of us have signed the authority to represent, or the agreement, retainer agreement with McHugh Fuller Law Group, but they would like also that this resolution be approved by us in open session, and also signed by us as well. I'll read through it real quick, if you want me to. Whereas Haywood County Board of Commissioners has the authority to adopt resolutions with respect to county affairs of Haywood County, North Carolina, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 153A-121. And whereas the Haywood County Board of Commissioners has the authority to take action to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the residents and citizens of Haywood County. And whereas there exists a serious public health and safety crisis involving opioid abuse, addiction, morbidity, and mortality in Haywood County. And whereas the diversion of legally produced controlled substances into the illicit market causes or contributes to the serious public health and safety crisis involving opioid abuse, addiction, morbidity, and mortality in Haywood County. And whereas the opioid crisis unreasonably interferes with rights common to the general public of Haywood County, involves a significant interference with the public health, safety, peace, comfort, and convenience of citizens and residents of Haywood County, includes the delivery of controlled substances in violation of state and federal law and regulations, and therefore constitutes a public nuisance. And whereas the opioid crisis is having an extended and far-reaching impact of the general public health and safety of residents and citizens of Haywood County, and must be abated. And whereas the violation of any laws of the state of North Carolina or of the United States of America controlling this distribution of a controlled substance is inimical, harmful, and adverse to the public welfare of the residents and citizens of Haywood County, and constitutes a public nuisance. And whereas the Haywood County Board of Commissioners has the authority to abate or cause to be abated any public nuisance, including those acts that unreasonably interfere with rights common to the general public of Haywood County and/or involve a significant interference with the public health, safety, peace, comfort, and convenience of citizens and residents of Haywood County. And whereas Haywood County has expended, is expending, and will continue to expend the future county funds to respond to the serious public health and safety crisis involving opioid abuse, addiction, morbidity, and mortality within Haywood County. And whereas the Haywood County Board of Commissioners has received information that indicates that the manufacturers and wholesale distributors, distributors, I'm sorry, of controlled substances have distributed in Haywood County, North Carolina, and surrounding areas, and may have violated federal and/or state laws and regulations that were enacted to prevent the diversion of legally produced controlled substances into the illicit market. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Haywood County Board of Commissioners assembled on this day at which a quorum is present, that based upon the above, the Haywood County Board of Commissioners are declaring the opioid crisis a public nuisance, which must be abated for the benefit of Haywood County and its residents and citizens. Be it finally resolved, that all resolutions that are inconsistent with this resolution are rescinded. So, basically, we're declaring the opioid crisis a public nuisance, and therefore the need to file the lawsuit. All right. Commissioners, any questions or want to weigh in on that?
Well, one thing I experienced this weekend, I really hadn't thought much about it, and my sister works for the Health Department in New Bern, North Carolina, Sheriff, and what she has to deal with is taking care of those babies born, that their parents were addicted, you know, while they were pregnant. And she said by, the only thing they can do is have somebody hold the baby. Can you imagine a little baby out of control? And it's not their fault, so, you know, I'm sure we have some of those situations in our county. So, if we save some, some children along the way, we're doing a good job.
Yeah, I'm finding, you know, it's rampant, we know it, you know, and this is just another way to fight it.
I agree.
Okay. All right, I've read the resolution. All in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? And that passes unanimously. We'll pass that around at the end of the meeting and have everyone sign it. All right, next, we'll move to new business. First item of new business is request approval to purchase six Ford Police Interceptor Sedans from Ken Wilson Ford from the Sheriff's Department. Chief Deputy Jeff Haynes will explain a little bit more about that to us.
Good evening, Commissioners. What I bring before you this evening is a request for the approval of the lowest responsive responsible bidder, as we presented an RFP, requesting open bids, quite some time ago. We also sent it out to those that are involved in the, in the procurement process as well to over 20 different dealerships. And in receiving that, the bid was opened, and Ken Wilson Ford came out the lowest responsive responsible bidder. So, at this point, we're requesting to utilize that, that bid and move forward with the purchase of six Ford Interceptor Sedans that were included in the fiscal year budget this current fiscal year. At, at the approval of that, a PO would be requested the amount of $147,498 for that purchase.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
It's a pretty good amount. I mean, that comes out to about $24,583 for each vehicle, so it's a pretty good, pretty good rate.
That is a, that is a very decent price, absolutely sure.
All right, and tonight, that's just the beginning of multiple vehicle requests tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions of Jeff? If not, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the purchase of six Ford Police Interceptor Sedans from Ken Wilson Ford for the Sheriff's Department in the amount of $147,498 to be paid for out of budgeted funds.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. And that passes unanimously. I didn't say no, but I heard everybody. Okay. Thank you. All right, thank you. Next is request approval to purchase a new ambulance, a Crestline ambulance module on a 2019 Ford F, I mean Ford F450, four-by-four chassis. All right, I'll let you go ahead and explain the rest of it. Travis?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Got before you tonight, request for approval of one new ambulance that will be on a Crestline module. They are a reputable builder. It's a little bit of a step up as far as quality and safety features than what we've been used to in the past. There have been some ambulance standard changes over the past couple of years, which is driving the cost up due to those safety features that are being built into the newer trucks.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions?
You know, I mean, not about the, the bid or whatever, but a while back, we were having some issues with the Ford, with the ambulances, you know, we switched over. Are we, obviously going back to the Fords now, I mean, have they overcome these problems, or?
We're going to have to test those waters, because the Dodge chassis availability nationwide is slim to none. They've already cut off orders for 2019. The dealers told me they were supposed to build about 2,500 chassis. They cut orders, they took orders on 2,500, and they cut, cut production at 1,500. Dodge is moving their chassis production for that particular size from Mexico back to the United States, and they were shutting that plant down to do that move, which has created the Dodge shortage. So, we're, we're looking at being in the Ford business for a couple of years. It's hopefully going to be a, a better experience than the past.
Yeah. Okay. All right, any other questions, Commissioners?
Just to comment, I know that even with the Sheriff's vehicles, this is coming from the budgeted funds, so.
That's right.
Just a note to the public that that is the case.
Okay. If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the purchase of the new ambulance, the Crestline ambulance module, on a 2019 F450 four-by-four chassis. The purchase will be from Precision Rescue Vehicles of Arden, North Carolina. And this is to be paid for, or this is in the amount of $219,869 to be paid for out of budgeted funds for this year's budget. I hear a motion.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed? And that passes unanimously. All right, Travis, you've got the next one, 2019 four-by-four Ford Escape.
Yes, sir. This purchase will be for the community paramedic program that we've brought before you all a couple of times, being able to go out and visit high-use N1 hospital discharged patients, more of a community outreach program, trying to keep people out of the hospital and promote better health and use of county resources, getting these people in touch with those resources is the primary pilot, or the primary purpose of the program. This is a vehicle, a new addition with the new position of this community paramedic.
Okay. And, and so this is the vehicle that'll be driven by the paramedic that's going to go out, and after someone's been in the hospital, check on those folks and provide paramedic services to them, and this is the position that's been paid for by the hospital. All right, so Commissioners, have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the purchase of the 2019 four-by-four Ford Escape from Taylor Ford for the community paramedic program in the amount of $22,606.86, or 68, sorry, to be paid for from budgeted funds out of the Emergency Services Department.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. All right, and those opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
Next, we have request approval of 2019 personal property depreciation schedule. Tiffany Mester, our business personal property auditor, is with us this evening. Tiffany?
Good evening.
Tell us about your schedule.
I'm just requesting the approval for the 2019 personal property depreciation schedules, and there's been no changes since the previous year, so they're the same as last year.
Okay. Commissioners, you have that in front of you. So, you, Tiffany, you said there's no changes at all?
Uh-uh.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, any questions? I know sometimes folks ask questions about this personal property stuff.
Yeah. We do this every year, don't we, too?
Yes.
You know, the only one, you know, would be, that I get some questions about, you know, is cars over 35 years older, but if they're not in agreement with what comes from the tax office, they can always come in and show the vehicle and.
Yeah, they can go through the appeal process for that. Yeah.
Who would they see to do that, just so they know?
They can turn the appeal in with anybody in our office, and within 30 days of the first notice of value.
How many, 30?
30.
Okay. I get the same questions as Mike, you know. Probably the only problem I see is with the cars that are over 35 years old, so guess us men in the car business.
Sometimes they, they think they're real nice antique cars, and they're really not, so they can come in and bring pictures and show them and get the adjustment.
Depends on if you want to sell it or not, right?
So, I guess generally, the best thing to do is to bring in the pictures, and that, that'll tell you a great deal about the condition of the vehicle.
Yes. And if they're unable to do that, we'll send somebody out to look at it, too.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, Commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2019 personal property depreciation schedule as attached as Exhibit 8.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously. Again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. Next, we have a request approval of two new job title classifications to the Haywood County Salary Grade Listing for the County Library. Kathy McClure, our Human Resources Director, is with us to present.
Good evening. Good evening. Okay, I have two items here to request approval for. The first one is to add the job classification title of Library Assistant to Resource Manager. Kathy has actually been evaluating some of the job descriptions in the library. This position is actually vacant at this time, and we have updated the job description. You have an attachment there, and upon approval to add this to our pay grade listing, she will advertise for the position. The second one is requesting approval to add the job classification title of Technical Services Supervisor. We do have someone in this position, and have, over time, this person has accepted additional duties and responsibilities, and the duties have been evaluated. The job description is attached outlining those additional duties, which warrants salary adjustment for compensation, and that would bring it more in line with the duties. This is not adding any FTEs, it's just adding new position titles, not doing away with the other titles. One of them was a Library Assistant 2, the other one was a Library Tech 3, and I talked with Kathy today, and any salary adjustments that may be done can be covered in their 2018-19 budget, so.
All right. Commissioners, have any questions?
I have anything to, I was just going to say, do you have anything to add to that on your.
It's something that the Library Board has, has discussed, or at least Kathy has discussed with us over a period of time, and the, the individuals that will be going into these, probably going into these new job title classifications, they warrant an increase and have been beneficial to the library, so.
It's probably, this should have been done some time back, and she's actually been evaluating, and with one of them being vacant due to a recent promotion from internal in the library, she went ahead and thought this would be a good time to actually do this one for the vacant position, as well as addressing the other issue, because supervisory duties have been added to that position. They've actually been added to both of the positions, so it's just bringing them more in line with the actual duties they're performing.
Okay. Have any other questions, Commissioners? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the two not, new job title classifications to the Haywood County Salary Grade Listing for the County Library as presented by Kathy and attached as Exhibit 9, or Attachment 9.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Next, we have request approval to pay South Data for the printing and mailing of tax notices for 2018 in the amount of $28,268.80 to be paid for and from budgeted funds. Mike Matthews, our tax collector. Mike?
Yeah, request approval for the, the tax notices that went out at $28,268.80, and we do have the money there in the budget.
Okay. So, this, this is for, this is the, what the county expends to pay the people who actually send the tax bills, mail the tax bills out?
Right, yeah. That's what it is. It's been right around there the entire time.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, this is an, an annual bill.
I noticed the due date on the bill was October 13th. Will they have any trouble with that, Julie? I mean, when would you mail the? I mean, when would you mail the check? The due date says October 13th.
Yes, it does, but it's not going to be a problem with South Data. We've been working with them for years and years and years.
Oh, okay. I don't like to pay my bills late, so.
Yeah, apparently there was a contract issue before that wasn't signed, and we've never had one in the past, so, and then it was sent to the wrong emails, so didn't realize there needed to be one signed.
Okay.
Mike, do they give us a special rate for mailing out a bulk like that, or is there a certain package deal you can get?
Yeah, I mean, I haven't looked at all the different packages. This is the one we've been using all along. I do know from looking through the email chain of the contracts that this rate will stay the same for the next two years.
It will.
Commissioners, have any other questions? I'm sorry, I was just looking at something. We don't, this is all we have to pay them, Julie? I just saw the, and I haven't looked at it that long, but the last, on the very last thing, it says 32-7-19-93. We don't have to pay that, right?
We don't have to pay that. That's actually a purchase order from the prior year, and I'm assuming it was included just to show that we do this on an annual basis.
Every year.
It's a different amount.
All right. I just want to make sure. I didn't want to approve and have to come back and do it again. All right. I'll entertain a motion that we approve the payment to South Data for the printing and mailing of tax notices for 2018 in the amount of $28,268 to be paid for from budgeted funds out of the Tax Department.
So move?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Next, we have request approval for a 15-foot road right-of-way easement from Haywood County to Southern Concrete Materials Incorporated for the purpose of expanding Vigaro Lane for their new business location at 50 Vigaro Lane. Chris Boyd, our Development and Facilities Services Director, will be presenting. Chris?
Good evening, Chairman Commissioners. We have a request from Southern Concrete, who owns a piece of property behind ours on Vigaro Lane. The property that they've requested an easement across for ours is the property where the garage, the former animal services facility maintenance is, Annex Jail. So they're moving some trucks in and out of that small road currently. It's about a lane and a half, not really wide enough for two trucks to pass. They've requested a 15-foot easement around the county property on the backside of the animal services facility, or former animal services facility. They want to put 10-foot of asphalt and have an additional five feet for drainage to allow for a full two-lane road to service their facility. They have agreed to remove and install the fence back outside of that 15-foot easement.
Okay. Commissioners, you have any questions?
Actually be kind of an improvement to the area, correct?
It would. It would be a good improvement to the road. Yes, sir.
Is it a road that we use, too, or county?
We don't currently, but we have access to use that if we need a second entrance into our property.
Is the road named, Chris?
Vigaro Lane.
Okay.
Chris, do you see any problems with doing this?
I don't. They'll relocate the fence. It'll move it a little closer to our facility, but most of the property is on a wooded area on the backside that we don't use or haven't used in decades, I would assume, by the growth of the trees.
I mean, as long as there ain't a problem, we're supporting a local business. I don't see no problem with it.
Have we determined that we needed to take out the joint use of that? Well, I just remembered this language specifically saying joint, and I'm reading through it real quick, and I don't see it in this one is the reason. Okay. Just, yeah, I just want to make sure that we have joint use. Understand Vigaro Lane is a town road, but Southern Concrete has to improve the road, and I would expect, since it's a town road, the extension of it, you know, whether the town would take that over or not, I just want to make sure that we have that joint use in case we need to come out that backside and utilize that. I don't want there to be a problem. Yes, sir. I'll review it and be sure. The one version did say joint use. If the wrong version is before us, we'll be sure it gets changed. But that is a Powell Bill-supported public right-of-way. We could confirm that with the town, and so it is an open road, and then this 15-foot would be joint, maintained by them. It may be that the city at some point would take over the maintenance of it, but they have not agreed to so far. Okay. All right. So Commissioners, have any other questions? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 15-foot road right-of-way easement from Haywood County to Southern Concrete Materials Incorporated, so long as that is a joint use right-of-way for the purpose of expanding Vigaro Lane for Southern Concrete's new business located at 50 Vigaro Lane.
So move?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And I'm assuming that, and I'll sign that as soon as that changes is made on that joint, then I'll sign that. Okay. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Or did I say that already?
Yeah.
Well, you're making sure.
Double, bud.
Well, that passes unanimously. Okay. The next is request approval for three-year lease between Haywood County and the state of North Carolina for the office use of county-owned property located at 285 North Main Street, Waynesville, North Carolina, and 60 Depot Street, Waynesville, North Carolina for the Department of Public Safety and probation and parole staff in the amount of $1. Chip Keen?
Mr. Chairman members, this came to us from the Department of Public Safety. They, I guess, realized they did not have a written lease for the property they'd been using for some time in the Justice Center, so it came to us just with the Justice Center property described in there, and then it came to our attention that they're also using some property, that's Annex 1, I think, back there, behind the administration part of the courthouse. So we added that to that. They've agreed to it, and it's just a $1 a year. It's space we provided to the state for many years, since the building's been there, but they've outgrown it and they needed some additional administrative space back here, so we added that to it. And this is just an update of something that's been going on for a long time. This would be a three-year lease.
Okay, so I'm assuming it's the county's responsibility to provide this space?
Yes, we get facilities funds, of course, from the court system, and we agreed to provide that, have done that for some time.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, have any questions? Chip? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the three-year lease between Haywood County and the state of North Carolina for the office use of county-owned property located 285 North Main Street, Waynesville, North Carolina, which is their space in the Justice Center, and 60 Depot Street, Waynesville, North Carolina, which is the space in Annex 1? Annex 1. All right. There's a, do I have a motion?
So move?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously. Did y'all want to discuss that? I left discussion out. Making sure. Next is request approval of a 45-foot secondary road right-of-way agreement between Haywood County and the North Carolina Department of Transportation for county-owned property located on Monday Fields Road in Canton, North Carolina. Chip Keen, our county attorney?
Mr. Chairman, this comes to us from the Department of Transportation, and they just simply requesting a right-of-way so they can build a road through there. It happens to be on property that's part of the flood acquisition property, but I checked all that out. I don't see that we're in violation of any of the restrictions by granting this right-of-way to the state of North Carolina as they've requested. And the easement, as you recognize the format, it's a typical right-of-way easement that we see all the time to DOT.
And Commissioners, also, on the attachment shows the location of the property and the road. Commissioners, have any questions?
It's been a gravel road forever, so I'm glad you're getting it paved.
Yeah, and that's, when they do that, in order to pave it, they would have to request an additional right-of-way, is what happens, so that's what's happening.
Yeah, they're going to claim what they maintain right now, so.
So that's what they're doing, is paving it.
Mm-hmm. I would say they're getting the right-of-ways where they can. Once everybody signs, they'll pave it.
Yeah, this is a good example of it, this picture as well, because it shows, you know, on the right-hand side, or coming from east to west, it shows the wider right-of-way, and then all of a sudden, it runs into the property that we own, and across the street, you see how that road narrows, and that's where that right-of-way narrows.
You can see where the pavement ends. It ends right in the middle of our property.
Right. Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion that we approve the 45-foot secondary road right-of-way agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for the widening of Monday Fields Road and paving thereafter.
So move?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously. Anyone else have anything for open session before we move towards closed session? All right. If not, I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session first for attorney-client privilege pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3, and for closed session minutes, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1. And, okay, got that motion?
So move?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And we are in closed session. All right, we are back from closed session, and after closed session, we have some motion regarding closed session minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve and release closed session minutes as follows. Closed session minutes under North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1 for March 5, 2018, for attorney-client privilege 143-318.11A3, March 5, 2018, March 19, 2018, April 2, 2018, April 16, 2018, and another group of April 16, 2018, and under personnel, Section 143-318.11A6, March 19, 2018. Now, this motion is a motion to approve and release the closed session minutes.
So move?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously. Next is a motion to approve but not release closed session minutes as follows. Under personnel, 143-318.11A6, two sets of March 19, 2018, April 2, 2018, two sets April 16, 2018, May 7, 2018, two sets June 4, 2018, and three sets June 18, 2018, and also one closed session, our closed session minutes regarding economic development under 143-318.11A4 for April 16, 2018. And that motion, again, is to approve but not release closed session minutes.
So move?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And then we are going to go back and revisit the opioid crisis. We've done that a lot this year, but apparently we did not entertain a motion and a second on the resolution. So under old business, number eight, the only item of old business, we did have a vote. However, after reading the resolution, it appears, but not supported by video evidence yet, that there was not a vote. So I'll entertain a motion, or there was a vote but not a motion, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the resolution that I previously read declaring the opioid crisis a public nuisance.
So move?
Second.
Is there any discussion regarding that?
We did, I know we discussed it.
We did discuss it. Any further discussion?
You were helping.
Anybody want to vote on whether we voted on, whether we had a motion and a second before or not?
Vote on it?
We can bet something. You want to bet something?
No, I think we did.
You think we did? Whose jersey do you want to wear? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, we got everything we need this time? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously again, this time with a motion and a second. All right.
Very good.
Maybe we'll get double money out of that thing.
That's right.
Maybe we'll fix a problem.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else for our meeting this evening? If not, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So move?
Second.
We got all kinds of motions to do that. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.